Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to Granville County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, Board Meeting. You're all welcome. If now, if I could have Pastor David Harmon come before us and pray on our behalf.
Yes, sir. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us, and we thank you for the opportunity that we have to gather here tonight as citizens of this county. We thank you for the freedom that we have in that. We thank you for the men and women who have given their lives over the centuries so that we might enjoy the freedom that we have to come and to be here together as a county. Lord, we thank you for these who are representing us. Lord, we pray that tonight that they would walk in integrity, that you would help them to have great wisdom, that you would help them to have sound mind and decision-making. And so, Lord, we pray that that would be the prayer tonight. Lord, that you would guide them in all the decisions that are made. We thank you for the body who's here tonight to hear and to share. Lord, we pray that you would help them to conduct themselves in such a way that would be honoring to you, Lord. And so, we just thank you for all the many ways that you have blessed us. We thank you for your goodness and mercy, and I pray that you would help us to act in wisdom and kindness tonight. And we pray all this according to your will, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Harmon. Please stand.
For the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, each of you have had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. I am pulling item four from the consent agenda. Items one, two, three, five, six, and seven. I'm seeking a pleasure of the board as to how you would like to proceed with those.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of all the items under the consent agenda except number four.
Is there a second? First by Commissioner Kozart, second by Ms. Henman, and followed quickly by Mr. Willerford. All in favor?
Aye.
If I could now, Commissioners, if you would all come to the... Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Clerk. A few quick comments. First of all, I'd like to welcome back tonight Terry Hobgood, one of our employees, our PIO, a man that's very, very humble. And Terry fell victim to a incident at the county office a few months ago, and we're thankful that he's here tonight, and I'd like to stand and give him applause. We're thankful to the Almighty and the blessings upon you and your family, Terry. I know you're not one that seeks any type of public praise or recognition, but we're grateful to have you as an employee. Now, I'd like to have the county manager introduce the next guest.
I'm going to invite her down too, if I could. Introduce her in just a second. But Commissioners, thank you for indulging me and allowing me to take this moment of personal privilege to introduce a very important new member of our team, Ms. Karen Evans. She will be serving in the role of deputy clerk, expanding a mighty one-person office led by Deborah Weary into a much-needed two-person office. And we really are excited to have her here, and I want, for your benefit and for the benefit of the audience, to read a quick bio. So Karen Evans is a native of Oxford, North Carolina. She graduated from South Granville High School and earned a bachelor's degree in history from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. After college, she interned in Washington, D.C., and attended Georgetown University, where she earned a certificate in American politics and public affairs. She was recently employed with Reading Connections out of Greensboro, North Carolina, where she was Director of Adult Literacy Programming. In her spare time, she volunteers as an online tutor, teaching English to adult immigrants and refugees. She currently resides in Oxford, North Carolina. And I would add, especially since they are here in the audience, that she is also descended from a very long line of esteemed public servants, and I know that they're happy to see her coming back to work for Granville County, too. So again, Karen, welcome, and we'd actually like to invite you up on stage for a quick photo op with the Commissioners.
We're going to now recognize Howard Haver, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm so happy to ask Mr. Howard Tyler to please come and join me. For those who do not know, he has served on our planning board continuously for some twenty-eight years. I will let you know that he's very special to me because my late brother-in-law, Steve Cooper, they started out at Mother Cooper's down there on Granville Street. Started out down together, and Steve always considered him to be a very special friend throughout their entire lives. But I'm grateful that I had a chance to get to know him as well, his wife Rita. They're just special people. And when I called to ask him to serve on the planning board, I had no idea that he would stay and he wasn't to serve for so long. And through this, what ended up happening, there were times when his name was up to be reappointed. And I must admit before this great assembly that I did not call him. I just came to the meeting and reappointed him. Afraid to take a picture, and he might say, haven't I been old enough? But he has remained calm in a number of very, very emotional issues over the years in doing that with the planning board. You may have read in the paper the accolades sent to him about his service on the board. It has been a real special, special honor for me to be able to have him being the appointee from District Four. I am so proud of how he has served with dignity, how he has been able to deal with difficult issues and remain calm and just deal with the guidelines that he has followed. I will miss not having a continual appointee on the planning board. I have been so grateful to him, and I think all the citizens of Granville County can echo the feeling that Howard Tyler has simply been one who's tried to do the right thing. He's just tried to do things right. He hasn't gotten into emotional ups and downs. And personally, for the support he has always been for me and my family, I will always be charitably grateful and look forward to those times when we might run into each other at the hall. But a longtime friend of the family, but also a great servant of this county. And I couldn't plus too much. When a man gives you twenty-eight years, it's hard to plus too much about serving on our term. But I am so grateful to him, and he took the job extremely seriously. He would go into the meetings and try to do his best. So I wanted to say thank you, my friend. I want to thank you for your service, and we'll be charitably grateful to you for your dedication to service. And I'm happy to present to you this certificate of recognition presented to Howard Tyler in recognition of twenty-eight years of outstanding service on the Granville County Planning Board. And to you say again, I say thank you, and may God continue the service.
Commissioner Goots, we recognize Ronnie Norwood, Alora Morehead, and Patricia Kennedy.
Can y'all see these medals before they start? I don't want to see them, because they weigh more than they do.
These are winners from the senior games, and we have a gold medal winner and two silver medals that are all winners. And we're going to just offer this certificate of recognition to Alora Morehead. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And also to Patricia Kennedy. Thank you. And we had the doubles in bowling.
Right. That's it for today. Thank you.
Lying about that to Nora in twenty-seven.
I wish.
No, you don't.
Ronnie, young man, over in the run. I've been going to run it ever since he... We couldn't... We had a four-year softball in northern town, and I had to find a place to put Ronnie. Ronnie had three hands. And I don't give a why he hit the ball there, he didn't get out before he hit the first place. When Allison called right up to put the hit, anybody started laughing, going, that's y'all going to get it. And they said he gonna get out anyway. But you know what? Ronnie has been from a little man to a grown man. I have watched Ronnie grow through all the challenges. When I said he was playing golf ball, you know, for his first place, and I seen Ronnie jacket up, jacket up, ruck off, anytime he wanted to be, anytime he wanted to jack it up from there. I seen him grow there. I seen, I seen his dad make him play horseshoes and ensure himself would come around, came around and beat it. His dad made him shoot horseshoes all day at the dog, or he couldn't eat, and he made sure he made it, and then told him, don't you never let a man go out and beat you. And Ronnie, Ronnie really have showed in his day, you know, he didn't let money come his house to be. Ronnie have been playing all, everything he goes at, he plays at. He put a hundred, hundred dollars in. And I have seen him grow from playing sports to master of law. Now digging that new Johnson Creek. So I seen this young man grow all the way, and his mom and dad are so proud of him. I'm so proud of him. Norland County is proud of him, and proud of all y'all, because y'all, y'all, y'all made us proud in all these senior games y'all had and the senior games. Ronnie, this Park Mason saying, recognize athletes of national medals, Ronnie Norwood. Whereas Northern Grand couldn't put senior Ronnie Norwood in a relationship, all on authority. The athlete in him could not be contained. Ronnie, for above the last five years, has participated in the local, county, senior games, and attended Northern Grand, senior summer, and snowball North Carolina. Whereas Ronnie Norwood placed number one as a gold medal. Every year, he has participated in a local game. He must be stored upended and technically during the COVID, because afterward, he stopped participating in North Carolina State Games, and he ended up qualifying for the national games by winning in his age group at the state games in 2022. And whereas nationally, senior games in the twentieth sport, violent competition for men and women fifty-plus, and the largest muscle sport he's been in the world for seniors. And whereas Ronnie has put his first to the plan and July to compete in a men's senior from sixty to fifty-four age group in cornhole, which had a large number of sisters of other participate age groups. And because of this, Ronnie had a beat up, had to beat out twenty other competitions from across the United States to win a gold medal. And whereas there is no doubt that Ronnie, definitely young and hard and mindful and still, he also competed locally and dearly, leathered off, horseshoes, shuffleboard, bow and has always liked to be to place first or second place in these events. Now them, and now therefore, we proclaim that the Granville County Commissioners are proud and aware of the success and accomplishment of Ronnie Norwood in winning national gold medal of cornhole, and for selling a gold, golden a sample for all age group and living their best life. Thank you.
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 Yes, no one.
The board wants now to acknowledge Joe Cinema, retired state trooper.
Okay. I'd just like to say, we appreciate all your service that you have done in Granville County, in the northern and around county. I'm sorry, and I'm grateful, too, that you didn't even stop me. Because Troy Sanders stopped me enough. He stopped me enough, so he stopped me and he beat me and put a light on, said, that's CJ, go ahead, oh, but he said, go ahead, oh, have a good night. But we appreciate all, all your service and what you have done for Granville County and serve at your home and in Granville County. You know, it's a blessing that you can, you can serve, I said, in home, just in one spot, not here and there, but thank you, and we appreciate it.
Proclamation honoring North Carolina State Highway Patrol Master Trooper Joe Cinema. Whereas state troopers are committed to protecting the modern public, but very few have served and been committed to doing so in the same state and county as Joe Cinema. Joe Cinema has served his entire thirty-year career in Granville County, North Carolina, and it's very rare for any state trooper to serve their whole career in one place. And whereas Trooper Cinema started his career as a cadet in the ninety-five, ninety-fifth basic, basic on September ninth, nineteen ninety-five. After his graduation on March eighth, nineteen ninety-six, the now Trooper Cinema was assigned to Granville County and given the call number C seven five three. Know that one well, don't you? The number has remained his number to this very day. Trooper Cinema was soon promoted to senior trooper on March eighth, nineteen ninety-nine, and on March eighth, two thousand and two, to master trooper. And whereas Trooper Cinema trained numerous new troopers as field training officers after they graduated from basic school. He helped train cadets while they were in basic school as an advanced collision investigation instructor. And whereas Trooper Cinema serves on special assignments such as hurricanes, disaster relief, and collisions, like the two beer tractor trailers on Interstate eighty-five near Oxford in two thousand and five. Do you remember that? He was also one of the many military officers and men and women who were called to duty and to be vigilant when our nation was attacked on September eleventh, two thousand and one. And whereas Trooper Cinema was recognized by both the State Highway Patrol and the Charlotte Mother Speedway for his years of volunteering to work traffic assignments during NASCAR racing. Now, and therefore, we proclaim that the Granville County Commissioners are proud and humble to recognize a member of the State Highway Patrol, Master Trooper Joe Cinema, who served with such dedication and loyalty to Granville County, its citizens, and the state of North Carolina. It is therefore a claim, as Master Trooper Joe Cinema retired September first, two thousand and twenty-three, that Granville County welcomes Joe Cinema as a citizen. Thank you.
Now, anybody else who would like a book or a coin, if you did not get one of these, please come to the county office, and we will be glad to give you one for a minimal donation of five dollars to the coin and fifty dollars to this beautiful book that I wrote every single word of. I didn't write a single word of it. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to invite everybody to Hester Baptist Church on the Sunday, September tenth. They're having their two-hundredth anniversary, and our chairman will again be doing a proclamation for them. So we would love to have you there with us at Hester at eleven o'clock on September tenth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners have anything else before we begin? Thank you. Mr. County Manager, if you would introduce our new veteran service officer, please.
Gives me great pleasure, Commissioners, to make another important introduction tonight, that of Albert A.J. Spees, if you would come down and join me. Sometimes I try not to read everything that's put in front of me out loud, but I think in this case I'm going to make an exception because his background is really important to the role that we've brought him onto play. Mr. Spees is originally from Lula, Georgia. He's a retired veteran of the U.S. Navy. He began his twenty-six years of service after enlisting in Gainesville, Georgia, and eventually rose to the rank of Senior Chief Master-at-Arms in the military police. He's served on six ships, the USS Butte, USS Simpson, USS Briscoe, USS Truman, USS Harpers Ferry, and the USS Wasp. Before reaching the rank of Senior Chief Master-at-Arms, Mr. Spees also served as deck seaman and signalman. Mr. Spees also has extensive experience serving as an anti-terrorism officer, physical security officer, conducting anti-terrorism training, acting as a department-leading chief petty officer and lead investigator, where he investigated larcenies, assaults, suicides, and other security violations, and senior master training instructor at the Navy Police Academy, overseeing major curriculum changes and teaching students at all levels of experience. In other words, Mr. Spees has been at or near the tip of a lot of different spears. In addition to his professional experience, Mr. Spees has volunteered with the Disabled American Veterans, serving as chapter veteran services officer, where he aided veterans and their families in obtaining benefits and services provided by the Department of Veterans Affairs and other government agencies. And I think you can see a trend starting to materialize that maybe has led to Mr. Spees' upcoming position. Mr. Spees also has earned an associate's degree in criminal justice and a bachelor's degree in homeland security and emergency management. He and his wife Cory have one child, Brooke, who is currently attending nursing school. Mr. Spees began his tenure at Granville County as the veteran services technician in July twenty twenty-two, and most recently has been serving as interim veteran services officer. I know that you all know that Granville County is a county that takes very seriously the service of veterans, and thus our service to and for veterans we also take very seriously. We got a good look at how seriously Mr. Spees takes his work over the past fifteen, sixteen months, and he joins us in this new role with the strong endorsement and backing of the entire Veterans Advisory Committee, several of whom helped serve on the interview committee that chose him, from several qualified candidates. And so with that, I'd like to welcome Mr. Spees and give him a chance to say a few words to the Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners, for giving me a time and opportunity to come up here and speak to you about this. All my career, I wondered what the next chapter would be. I found a passion. I have a lot of experience in those other areas, but I found a passion to help others, and what better way than to help veterans, people that I served beside, people that served before me, and even people that served after me. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, A.J. If I could interject before I present the next guest. I'm very proud of the decisions that our county management team is making in regards to the selection of new personnel. They're bringing in highly qualified people from diverse backgrounds that can make immediate impacts upon our county and its most appreciated county manager and assistant county manager. Now, if I would, Mr. Stan Winborn, please. I'll introduce Mr. Winborn. Dr. Winborn, and please forgive me if I'm too loud. I never know. I have a hearing impediment. I got two hearing aids in, and sometimes I can hear and sometimes I can't. So I apologize. If I'm too loud, just tell me to do this right here. Dr. Winborn, and it's a pleasure, sir, to have you and your, and your board here tonight and your other members of your staff. It's truly a pleasure to come before a board here. It sparks a new relationship and a new opportunity for both boards to collaborate and us to do bigger and better things for our children. Dr. Winborn has served in the public education for more than twenty-seven years, all here in Granville County. Stan attended Berea Elementary School for kindergarten and first grade and considers Granville County to be his home. He graduated with an undergraduate degree from Tulane University in New Orleans with a dual degree in Spanish and international relations, and spent several years working throughout Central America and apparel manufacturing industry. Then in nineteen ninety-six, he moved back home to North Carolina, where he began teaching as an English, as a second language, and Spanish teacher for Granville County Public Schools. Stan moved up through the ranks of Granville County Public Schools, holding a variety of leadership positions at both the school and district level. He has earned two graduate degrees in the field of education, and his doctoral degree is in educational administration from UNC Greensboro. He has served as an assistant superintendent for operations and human resources, the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and as the public information officer for Granville County Public Schools. His home is in the community of Berea in Granville County. He's married to his wife Marcy, also an educator. He's married to his wife Marcy, also an educator, and they have four children, all of whom have been or are Granville County Public School students. So, at this time, Stan, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Karen, and other Commissioners, County Manager, and everyone in attendance. It's been a very nice, warm welcome that I've received in this new role, and I very much appreciate it. I would like to thank each of you who were able to attend our convocation just last, two weeks ago, and our new teacher orientation events. Many of you Commissioners who were able to attend were there, and it was noticed and appreciated by all of our staff. It really was a wonderful feeling to see you guys there and being a part of that celebration and the opening of the school year, which by all accounts is off to a great start. I personally, and I know our team and our board considers you to be some of our closest partners in supporting education in the schools in our community. So, thank you for that. And I'm going to keep my comments brief tonight, but I would like to introduce members of my senior staff who are here. If you would, please stand when I call your name. Mr. Jamar Perry is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and Student and Family Services. Mr. Jamar Perry. Mrs. Courtney Curran, she is our Executive Director for Human Resources and our Public Information Officer. Ms. Courtney Curran. And Mr. Bill Graham, our Executive Director for Operations and Safety. Mr. Bill Graham. And I'm going to ask him to come down in a minute to provide some additional comments to you. But unable to attend tonight was Vicky Hines. Mrs. Vicky Hines, our Interim Finance Officer, who is with a family tonight. But also with us to show their support and appreciation is our Board of Education. We have in attendance our Chairwoman, Ms. Glenda Williams. Please stand. Mr. Leonard Peace, Vice Chairman. Excuse me, Ms. Williams is District 3. Mr. Peace is District 4. Ms. Ethel Anderson, District 1. Dr. Helen Lindsey, District 2. Ms. Danielle Hayes, District 5. And I'm not sure if they snuck in, we have two other board members, Ms. Amanda LeBrecq, District 6, and Dr. Taylor Frederick, District 7. So, I'm going to share some very brief updates, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Graham to come down and share some specific information that you requested regarding our jointly funded efforts for athletic facilities renovations. Then, of course, the whole team, we'll make ourselves available should you have any questions. We're happy to try to answer them for you. But I'd just like to, again, tell you all how proud I am to serve in this new role. And while I'm very, very optimistic about this school year, I'm also very aware of the challenges we have as we move forward. The bottom line is that we have a lot of work to do in order to get to where we really need to be. Tomorrow, the State Board of Education is going to be releasing the official results from last year's standardized test scores, and overall, on the whole, we moved the needle in the right direction from the previous year. I'm pleased to share. There were some areas where we did very, very well. However, there were some other areas where we fell short. Of course, our principals and our staff have had access to this data since June, and they've been working, unpacking it all summer, and dissected it in just about every way you can imagine. In many areas where we struggled last year, you can draw a straight line from those areas to teacher vacancies. We averaged almost 40 vacant positions throughout the year last year, and it took a big toll on our students. And, of course, I could stand here and try to justify or make excuses for areas we didn't do very well last year, or how we could have done better, but I'm not going to do that because, as I told our nearly 1,000 employees at Convocation, right now, I'm focused forward. That is our mantra for this new school year. It's already started. No need to look back except to find out what we can learn from what happened last year. And we're focused now, and I mean it, that we're going to give our undivided attention to four areas, which I firmly believe are going to make a huge difference, and the research validates this. And those four areas are safety, academics, attendance, and behavior. Those are the four things we are focused on this school year. And I won't go into each of those in detail because I know many of you heard what I had to say at Convocation, but our staff are very aware of our plans for this school year. And we need to get a handle on these fundamentals and make sure that each and every one of our schools is performing at a level that our students and our families deserve. I have provided each of you a folder. I hope everyone, you had enough copies, so everyone got a copy of our strategic plan, which, of course, is a work in progress, and we're going to continue refining it this school year. That strategic plan is the result of a lot of hard work by hundreds of stakeholders, many of them may be in this room, that helped contribute to this. And it's a great foundation for our work. However, I look forward to improving this document with fewer, clearer, and more specific goals for us. And we're going to continue to include the stakeholders in the process, and I hope I can count on you all here tonight to join us throughout this school year as we revisit this document and take a look at it. Your feedback, your input is extremely important to us. So, and again, our mantra is focused forward. So, thank you again, the opportunity for coming this evening. Your support for me and for our school district really means a lot. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Bill Graham to join me at the podium so he can share some updates about our joint projects, and you also have a handout in your folder that you can refer to. Joining Bill is Mike Carroll. Mike Carroll is our Director of Maintenance and Environmental Safety, and he's also our District Athletic Director, and he's here for answering questions as well. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Stan. It's a great pleasure to be with you again. Commissioners, I want to tell you how excited I am about this collaborative effort, and I want to thank Dr. Kozart and Mr. May for leading that charge and coming to me several times, expressing their interest in very clearly what they have as a vision for helping Granville County schools. We have decided, what you have is a summary of our two projects, what they are, and we have a project at Webb and a project at South Granville, and that was part of the presentation that it would be equally split between the two campuses. We had several conversations about how these would evolve, and this is where we have arrived. The concession stand renovation at Webb would benefit a great deal of people. It also, in collaboration with Coach Carroll, we were looking at Title IX considerations to make sure that what we did would benefit the most people, and this would benefit everyone by going forward with this project. So, where we are with that is that we have preliminary drawings, and we have spoken with some of the contractors and gotten the word out, and we're hopefully ready to begin actual demolition and construction on that as soon as possible. That's going to be a major project in terms of what it looks like inside, particularly the restrooms, and that's what the public sees when they come. And so, we want them to have a good experience. At South Granville, and so that vision, and we've talked with Dr. Kozart about that pretty consistently throughout, and that's been pretty clear. The South Granville project has had a different sort of trajectory, and we have looked at a couple of different scenarios and even had a couple of meetings with Mr. May. He's been very helpful in keeping us focused. And one of the last meetings we had, it was, he stressed that he really was interested in what the principal and the coaches want there, and so we solicited their opinion in this last go-around, and after talking with them, we ended up back where we kind of started, which is to take the existing weight room slash ROTC building and completely renovate that. And after talking with Principal Farrell, the decision was that that would be devoted strictly to the weight room, and ROTC would be moved. Now, the significance of that is that that will allow us to completely renovate and gut the hole inside of that, and that doubles the space, which will allow for the Title IX considerations so that there will be plenty of room for both male and female athletes there. We did consider several different alternatives, but this seems to be the best. So, having said that, I apologize for the length that has taken us to get to this point, but we've been busy, you know, getting ready for school, and I'm happy to say that that has, thanks to all your help. I see that the sheriff is here. I do want to say shout-out and thanks to the sheriff for what he's done to help us these first couple of weeks by having people at our elementary schools who are not, you know, typically assigned. But having said that, that overview, I'm happy to take questions, and Mike is here to answer it. I'm glad, thank you, Stan, for introducing Mike. I'm happy that Mike has joined the team because he can not only look at it through the lens of maintenance, but also through what's needed with athletics.
Do any Commissioners have any questions of Mr. Graham regarding the joint project?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I would just like to say how much I appreciate the collaboration, the ability to look and just take a wide view of our needs, and so excited about both of these projects, both at Webb and South Granville, and the engagement that we were able to have from the central office and others, and I think it's just a wonderful step forward, and I'm so proud to have these before us tonight.
Any other Commissioners have any comments they'd like to make regarding these projects?
I'd like to make the comment that we want to improve the facilities every way we can at our public schools, at our traditional public schools. We want to make them a place where athletics and the arts and things of that nature are areas in which our children gravitate to, and the better facilities that we have in those regards will help maintain our populations, I believe, and from talking to the administrators will help maintain the student populations at our traditional public schools. And so, it is this board that came together with the school board and administration to come up with these ideas on things that we could place in two of our anchor high schools that would help facilitate this and help foster and build a better environment for those activities to occur. We know that our children that are active in athletics and the arts are less likely to be engaged in other activities, and that's critical. So, on behalf of this board, I want to thank you, and I also want to thank the continuing dialogue that we're having with our county manager and in the school board on a couple of other fronts as well. One is the how we can use joint athletic fields to foster out throughout the county to further enhance opportunities for parks and recreations. And the joint MOU that we signed with the school board in regards to staffing of SROs, and we're hoping that we can hear something back from Mr. Winslow in regards to those fundings, and that will be hot on our list, will continue to be on our list, and if we don't achieve that this year, we know we'll pursue it heavily next year. And what that means for the audience is that we hope to be able to get under the Safe School Act sufficient funding from the state to be able to fund our SRO program where we can place an SRO at every school. And we set that in motion a year ago, and then we came back with a joint resolution here, I think early this summer, I believe, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, time slips. But I want to thank you. The board have any other comments for Mr. Winborn? I'd like Mr. Winborn to speak to our next item if there's no other questions.
I have one minor. Is there a wire being taken care of?
Yes, Ms. and then we expected that question, and I'm happy to say that, yes. It's a matter of when we can turn off power to have that done.
What do you need me to do?
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, we're going to move to the next agenda item and get a little background explanation from Dr. Winborn in regards to this board's action that I'd like our board to consider taking in a vote, the joint resolution supporting local control of school calendars and the ratification of House Bill 306.
Thank you, Chairman. Perhaps I should start just for the benefit of the audience who may not know that the calendar law in North Carolina is quite restrictive for traditional public schools. We have very little discretion about our start date, our end date, how many days we can have in the school year. We're pretty hemmed in, and we very much would like to have some additional flexibility so that we can design our programs in the best interest of the students. And this is something that public school districts across the state have been requesting for quite some time, but there are some competing interests across the state, especially with the tourism industry, in keeping sort of a more traditional agricultural-based type of calendar in place. But our Board of Education has continued to explore ways that we can gain additional flexibility in designing our own school calendar. And several of our board members had conversations with our elected officials, and they worked to develop a draft bill with Representative Sostoman, and that was presented to the House, and I believe it is now in the Senate, the state senate, where it is sort of stalled out. And we're hoping that by passing a joint resolution, we can at least signal to those in the General Assembly that this is an important, you know, set of powers or, you know, discretion that we could have locally. This specific bill, House Bill 304, Vance County joined in with it, and I believe there may be other counties that have since joined. I seem to say, yeah, I'm not sure of the names of those counties, but there are many bills that are parked in the senate right now from counties across the state requesting this same type of flexibility. And so, we, our board, is planning on having this item on the agenda at their next regular meeting, which is next Monday, the 11th. And so, we're hopeful that your board will pass this resolution tonight, and that we can pass it on Monday, and then we can send the joint resolution approved, joint resolution in to our elected officials.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. Board, if you would turn to page 244, and if I could read to you midway through there, this sums it up for me. Whereas, the state mandated late August start date means that in order to complete the school semester and testing before the winter break, Granville County Public Schools forced to adopt a calendar that contains a fall semester with approximately 18 fewer instructional days than the spring semester, leading to inequities between classes and difficulty preparing for state mandated tests. That's huge. And so, I think the responsible thing to do is to do as we did previously on other things, when we can work together on things that drive us common, a common bond between our boards, matters of, not divisiveness, but matters of unity, I believe that this board should consider this, and would ask the board at this time what their pleasure is in regards to passing this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we would pass this resolution as it's written on pages 244 and 245.
I have a motion to pass.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gooch, first by Commissioner Kozart. Any additional comments?
One quick question. I know that some time ago, we were in the ABC Collaborative, and that I had hearing that that had allowed Granville County some charter-like flexibilities. Was not calendar part of that?
Perhaps you're referring to the restart schools?
Because that was part of the ABC Collaborative, and was that a limited amount of time that we were going to be doing those? Was it just coming back out of COVID that those?
No, I don't recall that. The ABC Collaborative, to my recollection, did not include calendar flexibility. There is a method for certain schools have been deemed low-performing over a period of time to be designated as restart schools, and that gives them charter-like flexibility, which can include a calendar flexibility. That's only for certain schools within our district.
Okay, so it's only for the, it wouldn't be system-wide, it would only be for a specific school?
Correct, which makes it very difficult if you only have a few schools on the calendar and not others in different grade spans and...
It's a typical state policy to allow you flexibility on, you know, a tenth of what you need to achieve and not giving you the traditional amount.
Correct. I'd also, for the board, thank you, Commissioner Karen, for the board, just so you know where, there are a number of school districts across the state that forego state law and created their own calendars. And so, what the school board and what we're attempting to do jointly with them is to go through the process of getting the legislation and apply it back up to the legislators so that we can, so they have an understanding that our county wants to do this the right way, and then pursue it in that regard so the school doesn't have to... in that regard, uh, so the school doesn't have to make one of those arbitrary decisions down the road. So I have a first and a second. Um, any other for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries. Um, Mr. Winborn, Dr. Winborn, apologize. Um, you earned that doctor, so I'm going to make sure I say it.
You can call me Stan.
I know the public is concerned about the traffic at all the, uh, particularly in the southern and in the county as we, uh, we have Creedmore Elementary, I'm sorry, Holly Middle School now, uh, and South Granville High School and then Mount Energy. And so I know that we've had some conversation, you and I have, and, and I know that we're making really good progress at Holly Middle and South Granville High School and that you, if you'll discuss what you've engaged in regards to Mount Energy, uh, in that regard.
Yes, sir. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to that because I know that it is a, a point of concern, uh, for the community. Um, as you said, we're very happy about, uh, the traffic patterns at the new Holly Middle School, which sits at the site of the old Creedmore Elementary School. Um, Mr. Graham, the Creedmore Police Department, uh, Principal Dr. Kerry Chisnall and his staff worked very hard and they have a great plan in place. So almost all of the traffic is able to get off of Highway 56 for the drop-off and pickup. So there's, you know, there's not a lot of parked congestion uh, there in the city of Creedmore. However, Mount Energy, um, because it absorbed a lot of the, the students from Creedmore has grown in size and it's, uh, got a few growing pains. Um, the morning arrival and dismissal has been problematic and it has backed up traffic on Highway 56. However, I would like to thank, uh, as Bill, thank the sheriff, I'd like to thank him again and his team because they have been there in force, both at the entrance and the exit to help with kind of the smooth rotation of traffic in and traffic out. Um, and it's gotten better with each school day that's passed, um, especially as, you know, new parents figure out how it works. Some of our children transferring from car riders to bus riders and so on. But we are, uh, we have contracted with an outside engineering company that specializes in campus, uh, traffic flow and they're going to be doing a study, uh, this month on ways that we can improve the queues, the, the lining of the cars and sort of the transition because we have two kind of large parking lot areas. So we're not, we're not convinced that we're a hundred percent maximizing all of the space on the campus. Um, but if, if needed, we will, the next step will be to go to DOT and see if the, what the options are regarding, um, installation of a turn lane at some point. But we are, thank you for, for asking us. We're aware, we're working hard and we're trying to, I think it's getting better each day, each day.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Jay?
Uh, I don't have a comment. I have a question. Uh, the old Holly school is closed, right? Okay.
Creedmore. Yes, sir. So, uh, Holly Middle School has moved. Creedmore Elementary School was closed and so Holly is now on the campus where Creedmore once was and it's been converted to middle school. Uh, we did a lot of work over the summer retrofitting it and making some renovations so that it's more age appropriate. Now, the old Holly campus, we are still using those athletic facilities for the current Holly students because Creedmore is a smaller campus. It does not have a full-size gym. It does not have full-size ball fields. So the Hall, GC Holly Middle School students who play sports in the afternoon are hopping on an activity bus and riding over to their old campus to practice and, and play in their games. Um, additionally, Granville Academy, our smaller K-12 virtual blended school, um, meets at the new, the newer wing at the Holly campus two days a week. Um, and that's really of minimal impact right now because we, we still need to keep the utilities running. Um, the fire alarm systems have to be maintained until all, you know, we have to keep it more or less open. We can't just shutter it and mothball it right now. Um, and, and the board, I think, is going to be exploring the different options for how to use that campus this fall. I know that there is an upcoming operations committee and that will be a topic. Um, so whether or not part of the, the campus, the buildings are demolished or it's repurposed, we've put in a grant with the state to rebuild a brand-new, state-of-the-art middle school there. Um, so those are all options we're trying to work through and wade through. And if that, does that answer your question, sir? And more.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Uh, Mr. Superintendent, what I would ask is Dr. Cozart and I, uh, and along with the county manager, that we would love to have liaison meetings on a quarterly basis and, uh, along with the la, the liaison meetings, also the financial meetings as well on a quarterly basis. And that can, and that can either be, um, the quarterly, uh, the, uh, financial part, we can actually include as many board members as you'd like in on those. Um, but at, at a minimum of, of liaisoning, I, I think it's beneficial, uh, to all of us and it allows us to plan for the, uh, our budget in a much better way.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? County manager, anything? Dr. Winborn, it's a pleasure to see you tonight. Uh, we wish you the very best success, you, your school board, your staff. Uh, we're hoping for great things this year and, uh, thank you. Uh, again, I want to recognize the sheriff's department as well for, and you have reached out to us and committed them for the work they've done and we're not going to give up on this SRO matter.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I now like to introduce, if I could, um, is this the right one? Just give me a second here. I'd like to introduce some Mr. Forrest Westall, Westall, um, update from the Upper Neuse River Basin Association. And, um, just before he starts, county manager, county attorney, do you have any comments regarding this part of starting?
I, I would just like to add that, uh, when I started as a young assistant county manager in Durham 15 years ago, um, one of my first assignments was working on the new Falls Lake rules. And it wasn't too long after that that the UNRBA decided that they would hire Mr. Westall as their executive director. And he struck me as a very wise and experienced person then. We've both grown 15 years older and so, um, I know that the UNRBA appreciates his, uh, his intelligence and, and thoughtful approach to this work and, um, appreciate him coming all the way, uh, to present to us tonight. It's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the, uh, commission. Thank you for having me here this evening. It is a pleasure to be with you. We are at a, uh, a, a important juncture of the work of the Upper Neuse River Basin Association. Granville County has been a, uh, a member of the UNRBA since its inception in the mid 90s and has continued to be supportive and provide leadership in, in the things that we are, uh, working with on looking at the Falls Lake rules and the cost and impact of those rules to the citizens of this watershed. It is a, uh, it is a tremendously important set of rules that will have long-term impacts and will affect, uh, the future quality of this lake. So the Upper Neuse River Basin Association is made up of, of the members that are listed on there, which is, as I said, includes Granville County. And there's 13, um, local government membership that are on there. Also includes the South Granville Water and Sewer Authority and it is a part of, uh, of, of this organization that has been working on the Falls Lake rules for some time. Back in 2010, uh, uh, when the rules were being developed, 2009, 2010, uh, Granville County and others were working together. Uh, Jim Rinn was involved with that effort in terms of coming up with a set of consensus principles. Those consensus principles guided the development of those rules. And one of the aspects, uh, of those, uh, of those rules is that, um, it, it addresses what can be done in the future relative to the requirements that are in the rules today. Falls Lake is an extremely important, uh, resource for the community, for the area. It is obviously the, the water supply for the city of Raleigh. They're very interested in it. But I have been, uh, as the, uh, executive director, I've tried to represent all members from, from STEM to the, uh, to the city of Raleigh fairly and try not to favor one or the other. But certainly 500,000 people drink the water out of this reservoir every day. Uh, and so it is extremely important to them. It is also a flood protection. The folks in Kinston and downstream depend on this lake for flood mitigation. The Corps of Engineers put the project in for that reason. It was sited for that reason. It was not built for a water supply. It was not built, uh, to be a water quality lake. It was built for flood control. But as everything is in the world, people want to utilize the best resources that they have. So the lake has evolved into being, uh, providing several things. It protects downstream water quality because it releases water downstream. Uh, I've been involved in the, um, water quality management in the Neuse River and other parts of the state for almost 50 years now. And the flow in the Neuse River is very low in the summertime and so Falls Lake does provide, uh, habitat and flow downstream. So it's a very important, uh, uh, resource for the community. Uh, the rules that were passed in, in 2011 are the most restrictive rules in the state of North Carolina for nutrient control. Uh, they're probably some of the most restrictive controls in the United States. The requirements for reducing nutrients, uh, that were identified in those rules are beyond technology. We did that assessment way back in, uh, 2012. Uh, and we've been working on this now for 10 years. You've been funding the UNRBA. We've been doing your work and I hope that we have served you well in terms of looking at the science and the background on this. And so the estimated cost for the two stages of these rules, stage one is in effect now. Stage two is the one that's coming that costs the most. The first stage is a half a billion dollars, uh, cost estimate. Uh, you know, 500, uh, million dollars. That's, that's a lot of money. Then second stage is a billion dollars. And this is in a watershed of about 300,000, 250,000 to 300,000 people. And so that's an extremely high cost. The stage two rules, because of the consensus principles, allows a reexamination, which basically means we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do some more work and figure out if this is right or not. And that's what we've been doing for the last 10 years. We've been assessing, uh, the lake and the watershed. We've been evaluating that to determine if in fact this amount of money will do what it's supposed to do and if this amount of money should be spent. Uh, you know, I, I, I've been involved in water public policy all of my career and I think good public policy means that you get the return on what you invest. You don't just throw money at problems. You, you, you try to solve problems or to deal with issues. So the stage one requirements, thanks to Granville County and all of our members are being implemented. The new development requirements have been in place since 2012. All land in this watershed that has a half an acre or greater of disturbed area has to have, um, uh, an evaluation of stormwater impacts, not to increase nutrients in the, in the watershed. Agriculture has been implementing their requirements. They've put in best management practices to reduce nutrients for their practices and for their farms and for the activities there. One of the things that we have seen in this watershed and as, as you all know, cause you live here, uh, is it's changing. Agriculture is contracting in this watershed. There's not a lot of agriculture, big agri, there's not any big agriculture in this watershed and those small farms and family farms of there have been shrinking. Actually, uh, we have determined in our review of land use data that, uh, farming activities, production in this watershed has dropped by 44% since 2006. That means that there's, that went from about 15,000, uh, it went about 15% in the watershed of being agriculture has dropped down to about 9% now. Uh, and so it has been, it has been, uh, dropping very quickly. The wastewater treatment facilities, uh, in, in the, in the watershed Durham, Hillsborough, South Granville Water and Sewer Authority have invested a tremendous amount of money. I don't have to tell you that, Russ, and everyone else have told me already about it, uh, in terms of how much that the South Granville Water and Sewer Authority has invested in that. Uh, they have reduced nutrients by, uh, by a tremendous amount. 24% of nitrogen and 69% of phosphorus coming out of those plants have dropped. So it's been, that's been a tremendous, uh, success. For existing development, uh, we've had, uh, in this watershed, preservation of land, installation of, of best management practices, putting in, uh, practices that control runoff from existing development in the watershed. Just a lot of positive development, uh, in this watershed. And so all of the stage one requirements are being met. All of the facilities and everybody's in compliance. We developed, uh, a program called the, uh, the, uh, the IAIA or the interim alternative implementation approach and you all are part of that. In fact, Granville County led that effort. Granville County stepped forward and said, we're willing to invest money in this watershed to improve water quality. And because of that, all of the other members of the UNRBA followed suit and they put money into it. So Granville County's been investing, uh, at least a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, and for the last two years and it is committed for another three years. We think that investment approach is the way that we should be going in the future. So our approach on, on looking at evaluation of stage two has been science. We want to know how this lake is responding. We want to know what's going on in the watershed. We want to know what we can do. And we have developed data, information and models that will tell us and guide us on developing a good public policy for the future, uh, of water quality in this, in this lake. And, uh, as we have been working, uh, forward all the time, we have, uh, followed the requirements of the rules. We've gotten approvals by the North Carolina Division of Water Resources on everything that we have done. Uh, we have worked with, uh, other organizations, the city of Raleigh, other research organizations, NC State, the North Carolina Collaboratory has been studying the lake for the last, uh, four years now and we've been working very closely with them. So we have developed an unprecedented amount of data and information. This is the most studied reservoir in North Carolina and, and we have, we have provided, I think, a tremendously important amount of information and data on this. One of the things that came very clear when we started working on this is the distribution, uh, of, of loading in this watershed. All land use activities contribute to this. Um, Jim Rinn and I went up and met with the, uh, home builders and the real estate folks up in, uh, Roxborough, uh, a few, few years ago to talk to them about, uh, the rules. They were very concerned about them and rightfully so. It impacts economics there. But one of the things I had to tell them is that everything you do in this watershed feeds the watershed. The water flows downhill. So from the top of the watershed, I cross the Tar River coming up here tonight, you all have the benefit of being in two watersheds, Tar, Pamlico and then the, the Neuse. But all the water flows downhill from the top of the, of the lines. And so everything contributes. But when you start looking at this watershed, you find out something extremely important. This watershed is not that developed. It mostly is wooded. It is, it is over, uh, 60, is over 65% wooded and unmanaged land is that, on that chart there, that, uh, that green area, that's all, uh, surface waters, forest land, wetlands, uh, scrub lands, lands that are not in any kind of production. So there's not a lot of management you can do with those lands. There's not a way to reduce nutrients. So the 25% of land that is, that is, that is developed cannot provide any kind of reductions necessary that's going to make a tremendous change in this reservoir. Thankfully, the reservoir is in pretty good shape. The reservoir is, is meeting its needs. If you've been on the lake, if you've fished on the lake, if you've paddled on the lake, if you've been on the lake, it is a, it is a good lake and it provides, uh, all of the uses that it's supposed to do. And, uh, we have had studies done by the US Forest Service that supports what we have, uh, been finding out about the, uh, the lake and the watershed. And we know that protecting forest lands in this watershed is an important thing to do. We know economic development is crucial to all of our, all of the jurisdictions in this watershed. We know it's important to the citizens. We know it's important for maintaining economic health and growth. So it has to be there. But preservation of land is always a good thing to do and it also is a way for people who want to preserve their land. It's, it's voluntary. Nobody's forcing anybody to, uh, preserve their land. They volunteer to do that through, uh, conservation organizations. Some of the key findings from the modeling that we have done, uh, is that chlorophyll A, which is the green pigment that is in all, uh, plants. And, uh, chlorophyll A is the standard that's in the lake. But what we have found is that the chlorophyll A in this lake has been stable for the last 10 years, that it has reached that point where it is, it stayed where it's at. It still doesn't meet the standard, but it is at a level where all uses in the lake are being met. Water supply, recreational, ecological, fishing, uh, everything that people use the lake for is, is able to do that. In fact, just recently, the city of Raleigh sent out in their bills, a flyer that said they have, they competed in a, in an international best tasting water contest. They were the third best tasting water in the whole, uh, international community. I thought that was a, a, a good statement of how water quality in Falls Lake is, is doing. So we, we have, uh, uh, good information that says that the lake is stable, that it is, uh, that it's meeting its uses, but the lake needs to be managed. We know that the watershed is going to continue, uh, to have impacts on it and we're going to need to, uh, we're going to need to continue to, uh, uh, provide. need to, we're going to need to continue to provide active management in there. The data and modeling shows that large storms and climate changes has an impact on the lake, the changes in intensity of storms. We know that storms are becoming more severe. We know we have a large hurricane storm recently, just had one come through, and they will be coming through again, and that, that has an impact. The chlorophyll A standard cannot be met by any reasonable level of reduction. There's no way to do it. But the good thing is, we don't have to do that. We can continue to keep the lake at its quality. We can take actions that are reasonable, are cost effective, and technologically supportive. This lake has plenty of nutrients in it. The sediments in the lake reduce, release nutrients. The lake is cycling nutrients in there, and the algae maintains its level. But the level that's being maintained is okay as far as the uses that are there. So stakeholder input, input from our, from our membership, input from all groups that are there. Today, we met in Butner with, with our Path Forward Committee, which is our steering committee, and we have people from the environmental community that attend. They make comments, and they're very supportive of what we're doing. We have a lot of support. The Division of Water Resources is being very supportive of what we're, of what we are coming up with as our recommendations. So the implication for revised strategy is that we believe additional large scale nutrient load reductions are not achievable. There's no way we're going to dramatically change the loading of nutrients to this lake. As I said, 75% of the watershed is undeveloped or is, is unmanaged, so you can't do anything with forest land. You can't make it less. And in fact, we ran the model with, we converted, once you set these models up, you can look at different things, you can test different scenarios. The scenario we looked at was what if the lake, what if the watershed was all wooded? What if there was nothing but trees in the watershed? Would the lake meet the standard then? And the answer was no. It won't meet the standard even if the watershed was fully wooded. So it doesn't make any sense to continue to try to do things that are not going to have a dramatic effect. We need to hold the line where we are. We need to keep the lake where it's at and make improvements where we can. So incremental management, long-term nutrient management is, is the most effective thing to do. That is to invest money over time. We need to be able to, to look at the future of a, of a site-specific standard for the lake, but right now, we need to get a management strategy in place that will be protective of the lake's uses and protective of the, of the future use of this lake. So the principles we've come up for revised strategy have been outlined on this particular slide. We want to build on the investment approach. That's the main aspect of this. We want to set investment levels that we get agreement on all of our members, all 13 of our jurisdictions that are in the watershed. We want to agree on how much money we'll put into improving this watershed. We want to do it on a watershed health basis, because when we, when we invest money in efforts to improve water quality throughout the watershed, it helps everyone in the watershed, including the lake. And so that's kind of the, the baseline of what our approach is and what we need to do. We need to expand partnership. We would like to get landowners, agricultural members involved with the activity. We want to, we want to continue the work of, of a watershed organization like the UNRBA to help coordinate this and to work with the state on it. And we have reached some general agreement with the state that this makes sense. And so we are very hopeful that we can develop a set of rules that will do that. Do we have, we want to look at nutrient reduction opportunities, and we want to be able to provide opportunities for cooperating within the, within the watershed with different owners. Today, I, we, at the Path Forward Committee, we worked on the consensus principles. This is the document that will represent the basic statement of the people in this watershed on what we think the new rules should look like. I appreciate Deborah getting this to you today. This is this two-page document. This is the draft of it. The board will approve this, will approve a, a final set of consensus principles at the September 20th meeting. That's coming up for the, for the board. We appreciate the fact that your chair is, is the member, is your director on the board of, of the UNRBA, and we appreciate Chairman May's doing that. So we will be presenting this to the board for approval, and then we will be bringing the final version of that out to all of the jurisdictions, including you all. Tonight, I'm not ready to give you something that, that I would ask you all to approve or, or to support. I, I want you to know that these consensus principles, and I won't go through all of them now, but it, it basically illustrates what I have on the board. A reasonable, cost-effective, step-by-step way, a cooperative agreement amongst our communities so that we know we're all doing the same thing. And Granville County's been very clear in that they want to make sure that all of the people participating in this are doing their part and are fulfilling the requirements for the new development rules, and that's in these consensus principles. And so we have a set of, of principles that we want to submit to the state as a unified group, as a unified UNRBA, as a unified member of our jurisdictions, and that includes Granville County. And so when this gets developed, it'll be coming back to you all for, for approval, and we'll have a resolution, a proposed resolution for you all to do that. So this is the, this is the, the next stance, because in December, we're going to submit our recommendations to the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission, to the General Assembly. The North Carolina Collaboratory will be doing, making their recommendations, and we've been working closely with them. So we believe we're going to be on the same page, and we believe that we're going to get a set of rules to revise the strategy for the Neuse, for the Upper Neuse and for the Falls Lake that will be fair and equitable to all the people in the watershed, including Granville County. So with that, if, if there's, Mr. Chairman and members, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wilford.
I may have missed it. When does the second stage begin? You said there were two stages.
Yes, the second stage was supposed to have begun already, but the General Assembly, we worked with the, the folks at the General Assembly when they passed the bill that created the Collaboratory. We put in there a provision that it's on hold, pending until we get done with this evaluation. So it will not go into effect until the new rules are, are adopted. So we've managed to set that aside, so we're not, we've not been doing the stage two requirements, and, and, and that's because the statute changed the, the implementation date that's in the current rules.
One more comment slash question. Does the Tar River Land Conservatory help at all in this process as far as?
Absolutely. My understanding is, and I've talked to several of our members, that the, that, that group also preserves land in the, in the Neuse side as well. And so they have helped identify property in the Neuse side that they've helped fund, and local governments, Granville County and others have provided money for that too. So all of the conservation agencies, including the Tar Group, has, have been involved in, in helping preserve land in the watershed.
Commissioner Karen.
So if you could back up in your slides, slide 14 on your presentation, it's the existing development, new development. You passed it.
I passed it.
Yeah, one more. There we go. So new development, right? Continued implementing the rules that we know about, right? We have caps on impervious soils, it's an easy one to like, you know, articulate in a, in a set of rules. But like, updating ordinances to allow innovative stormwater solutions. Would you consider a 20%, say, conservation subdivision to be a innovative stormwater control as opposed to divvying everyone, every parcel in that neighborhood up into individual ownership to have an ordinance that would allow for a HOA-owned or collectively-owned area within that subdivision, say a 20% conservation easements setup so that it wouldn't be an individual ownership? Would that be, what would you consider to be an innovative stormwater solution?
That, that would be on the list of the innovative stormwater solutions. One of the, one of the things that came up, and actually, I think out of Creedmore, there was folks who made this suggestion several years ago, rather than doing individual projects on individual developments, was to join together as a group of projects and put in a regional system. That way, you would kind of optimize how you would develop the property and then cooperate together on one, on one thing. So that would be one of the potential ways of being more innovative on, on developing that. So that's, that would be a part of that.
Just wanted to ask, since we had one of the local experts on Falls Lake watershed here, so appreciate you.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I just, Forrest, if you will, just briefly touch on it, because you, you touched on it briefly on, on, I know that our attorney is very involved. How we, how we as a board promote our watershed, and particularly making sure that we are not alone, that other, in your consensus document that will come before coming, that, you know, we're going to do our very best, because UNRBA is not a regulatory agency. It is a, nothing of the sort, but we are still going to write the document in a way that make, kind of holds other partners to the same level that, that Granville County has, is doing and continues to do.
Right. Well, one of the consensus principles that is included in this list is that this watershed organization, which is, which would probably end up being the UNRBA, but basically, that organization coordinates activities amongst the membership, including the investment levels and all of the things in the development of a joint compliance group. One of the provisions of that would be to have a self-evaluation process, that we would have the members look at each other, and we would document, because I think it's in the best interest, and we discussed it at the Path Forward Committee today. The way I described it is, is that you want to be, everybody, you know, I'm not saying nobody, that we don't trust each other within UNRBA. I think we do, but it's better to know what everybody's doing. It's better to know that there's consistency. It's better to know that, that people don't feel like that someone is somehow skirting the issue, and, and therefore, this organization, this watershed organization can provide an opportunity for a joint evaluation, open to everybody. So there's no, you know, it's very transparent, and everybody, you create a committee or a group, and you'd provide documentation of how the rules were being implemented in every jurisdiction to make sure that there's consistency there.
Thank you, Forrest. Any other questions from board members?
With that, there's nothing to vote on or anything in nature. I want to thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Look forward to you coming back to us and keeping us informed. It's a pleasure working with you on the board.
Appreciate it. Good to be with you all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Falls.
Purpose, the purpose of this, this agenda item is to announce the Granville County employee NCDOT Follow Litter Sweep Friday, September 15th, 2023. Background, the county has taken an active step to help address litter issues in the county. Twice each year, county employees and commissioners have provided an opportunity to participate in litter cleanup program in conjunction with the NCDOT Litter Sweep Program. The DOT-sponsored Follow Litter Sweep begins September 16th and concludes September 30th. My office is requesting volunteers within the county government to help clean a section of roads within the county. The scheduled day of litter pickup will be held on Friday, September 15th, 2023, with a rain date scheduled for Friday, September 29th, 2023, for, for county, for county employees participating. And as an incentive, when, once the participants are finished picking up litter from the selected roads, employees will have the option of not returning to work without using leave as approved by the county manager and our supervisor. Additionally, employees can also earn the 20 points toward their wellness activities by participating. Are there any questions from the board? I know you, a bunch of you have participated in the past, and maybe we can get some of county attorneys to help us too.
I do appreciate the fact that you guys did a pickup on Highway 56 recently, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah. NCDOT responded pretty quickly with that request. I'm glad they did.
Any other commissioners?
You don't provide wheelchairs to you?
Excuse me, ma'am.
You don't provide wheelchairs for us, do you? So I don't fall and break a leg again?
No, you've, you've put your time in, in the past.
Any other questions for Jason? Jason, thanks for, thanks for what you do. Thanks for bringing this to our attention. And by the way, if a member of the public wanted to participate on this date, could they?
Yeah, I wish, yeah, any, if they can contact me at 919-691-0928, I can provide them all of the cleanup supplies. I'll bring it to them and drop them off and...
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. Going to move on to public comments, and at this time, I do not believe we have anyone signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to make, that is here tonight that did not sign up but wishes to make a public comment? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on.
Ask the board, Sue, Tony, Jimmy. You guys want to keep, you want to take a break or you want to keep driving? Anyone want to take a break or keep driving? Keep moving?
Okay, good. All right. Ms. Boone?
Thank you, Ms. Boone. I'll have a brief statement here, and then I'll let you commence with your topics on each. Now, this is a public hearing. We'll be moving into a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear the views of the public on aiding and encouraging the location or expansion of industrial facilities in Granville County, Altech Industries. And at this time, I'd like to declare a public hearing. I'd like to recognize Ms. Boone, the interim Economic Development Director, for a brief overview.
Good evening, Chairman May and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening to present three separate public hearings for three separate entities. So the first public hearing here for Altech, this is for the Altech Industries facility located in Creedmore. Altech was awarded a building reuse grant in the amount of $500,000 from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for its investment of over $30 million into renovating a 355,000 square foot facility on its Creedmore campus. The company will create 70 jobs as a result of the project. This is Altech's fourth expansion into the Creedmore campus, and this was a competitive project in nature due to the fact that other Altech facilities were being considered for this investment and job creation, and we're very grateful for the continued corporate partnership that they provide with our county school system and through the community, the jobs that they provide, and the tax revenue that they generate, and are very pleased that this facility was selected for that expansion. The maximum cost of county-funded improvements for this project would total $300,000. This includes a 5% required match by the local government entity for the building reuse grant award, which amounts to $25,000, and then a cash incentive from the county of $275,000, which came at a recommendation from the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Is it your overview?
That is the overview, yes.
Okay, thank you. And your recommendation?
I strongly recommend the board commissioners approve the proposed incentive amount once the public has had a chance to respond, and if there are any questions from commissioners that I could answer. This would give many economic benefits and job creation prospects to the initiative that we have, which is growing the tax base and supporting and encouraging industries to grow in Granville County.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak, come to the podium and state your name and address Yes?
Danielle Hayes, 2024 Creekside Drive, Franklinton, NC 27525. So just really quickly, I just wanted to say that, I mean, I'm not speaking for the entire Board of Education, of course, but for myself, I love the idea of expanding the Altech facility, and I know he didn't mention it earlier when he is here, but our superintendent, Dr. Wimbourn, along with our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Mr. Perry, are both traveling to one of the Altech facilities, actually the one in Mount Airy, tomorrow to look at the facility there and look at their, they have a, a program where they have kids come and participate and do internships. And so this would be a great partnership that we could have with him in expanding our CTE programs that we are, that we are always looking to, to grow and expand and give our students more opportunities for... to go and expand and give our students more opportunities for, you know, careers and jobs after they leave our schools. So, just super in support of it, and I hope you guys go for that.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Is there anyone else wish to speak in regards to this project? Okay, with that being said, does the board have any questions?
One comment.
Yes, sir.
Being a resident of Butner and trying to remain in the good graces of the mayor Terry Turner and the Butner Town Council, I need to point out that Altech is in the town limits of Butner and has a Creedmoor address.
Well, thank you there, Mr. Gooch.
If I didn't point that out, I will be severely reprimanded.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch there. And as to the, does any other board members have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, as a retiree from Altech, it's family friend, and it's a good place to work at.
Sir, I have one minor comment. Altech has been a fantastic citizen to, as far as community service at ACIM. For many, many years, they've been helping put unload trucks and put the food away at ACIM, so I just wanna thank them for what they've done, for that.
So, I just want to remind the board, this is about the recommendation of following the public hearing at the conclusion of the public hearing about the approval of $300,000 incentive package, and the county manager, county attorney, will be authorized to finalize it with a 5% match of $25,000. And so, is there any other questions regarding this information regarding Altech? If not, I will close. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to briefly draw attention to the final bullet on the slide and add a little bit to it, Ashley, which is to note that the way that this agreement will be structured, and at the level of investment that Altech is promising to make, the county will always be considerably ahead in receipt of additional property taxes, then we will be out incentive payments, and in fact, the total incentive payment of $300,000 would be coming back to the county within about a year and a half, two years, of the completion of the capital investments.
Ms. Boone, how many employees at Altech?
Currently, or who will be created as of?
Currently, and then how many created?
Currently, a little over 900, and then this will add 70. And as part of the grant procedures with the building reuse grant, and then anything that the county does as well, we do have performance agreement provisions in all of our contracts to meet those requirements for job creation.
So right at 1,000 employees? Very good. At this time, if there's no other questions or comments from the public, or the board doesn't have any more questions, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and now I'm gonna ask the board regarding the recommendation. If you would go to the bottom of 260, your recommendation's before you, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move.
I would be, I make the motion to be, thank you, desperate.
That you're making the motion that the recommendation on page 260 be taken?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now I have Mr. Willoughby with the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jay with the second. Any other questions? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to our next one. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear the views of the public in aiding and encouraging the location and expansion of industrial facilities in Granville County, Auction Direct USA. I will now declare a public hearing open, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Audrey Boone, again, with a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, the second public hearing is regarding Auction Direct USA, which is a newly located facility in Oxford. Auction Direct was awarded, within a large incentive package, a building reuse grant in the amount of $500,000 from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for its $2.9 million investment into renovating and upfitting their facility on part of the former Santa Fei Tobacco Company campus in Oxford, the Oxford Industrial Park. The company will create 173 jobs as a result of the project. This project was also competitive in nature, the company was considering Pennsylvania, New York, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia, I believe, as possible locations for this new reconditioning facility. The maximum cost of county-funded improvements would total $25,000. This is the 5% local government required match for the building reuse grant award, which would amount to $25,000. And once the public has had a chance to respond, and any questions from the commissioners, I strongly recommend the board commissioners approve the proposed incentive amount.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. At this time, is there anyone wishing to come to the podium and give your name and With no one coming forward, does the board have any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I think when we went to the initial grant opening, when we, they, the 175 jobs, we're gonna pay an average salary of 83,000, so that's a well above the average salary in Granville County.
Any other commissioners, any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Willoughby. Clear the public hearing closed. Board, do you need any further clarification? I'm going to ask that, bear with me. Okay, I want to include, in your motion, include the recommendation, if you so agree, and then the authorization resolution by government body of the applicant as well, based upon your vote. Do I have a, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the, move to approve the recommendation, unless the resolution that we see that you mentioned.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Ms. Simmons seconds, Dr. Kozart first. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I want to go back, I'm gonna have to do something because I missed a step, so I'm just gonna go back to the first one we did, and reopen the public hearing on Altech Industries, I missed a step, so reopen, is there any comments by anyone, anyone that wishes to come forward? And so I need to add something to that, and I'll go back, if there are no comments from anyone else, I'm gonna close the public hearing, okay? And then I'm gonna say that we're gonna do the recommendations, and we'll take a vote on the recommendations, and also include the authorization resolution by the government body of the applicant, and that will close that out.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
In the second, so motion on the recommendation and with the authorization resolution by government body. And I have a first and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, motion carries. My apologies, board. And the last public hearing, Ms. Boone. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear the views of the public in aiding and encouraging the location or expansion of industrial facilities in Granville County, Bridgestone, Baghdad, Bandag, and declare the public hearing open. Ms. Boone?
So for this third and final public hearing regarding Bridgestone Bandag, this is the facility located in Oxford. Bridgestone Bandag was also awarded a building reuse grant in the amount of $450,000 from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for its $1.6 million investment into renovating their facility on Industry Drive. The company will create 61 jobs as a result of the project. The maximum cost of county-funded improvements would total $22,500. This is the 5% match for the local government requirement of the building reuse grant award, and in total would be $22,500. And once the public has had a chance to respond, and I answer any questions from the commissioners, I strongly recommend that the board or commissioners approve the proposed incentive amount.
Does anyone in the public wish to come forward and make any comments? Does any of the board members have any comments, questions?
I just have a minor question, so which building are they gonna rehab?
I don't know.
That's the good one, okay.
Of the buildings that are there, they did list the specific building and the specific construction estimates and upfits for it.
Any other questions from any other commissioners? With that being said, declare this public hearing closed. Does the board need any further clarification? I'm now asking for a recommendation by the board to review the recommendation, and also to vote on the recommendation and the authorization resolution by the government body of the applicant.
What's the chairman, all the motion that would be?
Authorizing resolutions. Motion by Mr. Jay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cairn. Board, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, now we're finished with our public hearing, do you have anything else for us?
I do not, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, hopefully we dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before Ms. Boone sits down, I would just like to take a minute and appreciate her considerable efforts over the past several months, holding our economic development office together, single-handedly, she's been doing a great job, and we have cleared a kind of backlog of project work, and as you can see tonight, moving forward with some new, some new projects that have been pending for a couple of months, so really wanna appreciate her good work on this front.
Thank you, Ms. Boone, and thank you, county manager, appreciate it, thanks for your efforts. Next item is Raymond Allen, Parks and Grounds. The purpose of this is to prove the purchase and installation of remote-controlled lights for the Granville Athletic Park, Phase Two, youth baseball fields and soccer fields.
Yes, sir, good evening, how y'all doing tonight?
You're doing good, how you?
Yes, we were trying to go ahead and finish Phase Two, we completed Phase One last year, and it, we had it installed, and it, they used it for the high school season, and it worked out really well, where we didn't have to have employees out there till 10:00, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, especially during school nights, if you have part-time, or even if we have to be out there and then come, you know, come in again early the next day, but we, they're having an adult league out there right now, and it's being used right this second until 9:30, so it's, it's been very valuable. We figured it has saved about, just in the first year alone during the spring, it saved about $7,000 between, you know, utilities, part-time, and full-time, so we anticipate Phase Two would save even more than that, because it's more of the youth soccer fields, so you have them in the fall and the spring, so, and I'd also recommend, if you ever build any ball fields in the future, do it, it's awesome, very awesome.
Board, do you have any questions?
Yes.
You show me your phone.
Who else? You control it?
I do control it, yeah, right here, we have an app.
I believe.
Right here, yeah.
Who else? If you're not available, do you have backup?
I do, we have it on our computer at work, and then my assistant has it on his phone too, so.
So nobody's always?
Always, that's right. We usually set it, like game tonight, we usually set it in the morning on the computer, then if they were to call and say, you know, we need them on about 15 minutes early because it's cloudy, I can, right on my phone, right on, so, it's been, I didn't know how much we missed it until we got it, so it's been a...
Hadn't really had any?
No, no. They sent a guy out, trained us up, you know, about two hours, no problems at all, not going with it.
So we got it on soccer field and?
We have it on the two baseball fields right now, and that's what we're trying to get approved, is for the other, Phase Two, the 16 poles at Phase Two. Yes, sir.
Mr. Allen, ultimately, this is cost savings?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so...
It, based on what we figured in just this past spring season alone, it will pay for itself within three years.
Outstanding.
So that's real good, and I think the youth soccer is gonna pay for itself quicker than that, because they practice, well, still five nights, five nights a week, but it's a little bit longer than you would a high school.
You guys are being commended for operating efficiently and finding savings, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? With that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion to approve the recommendation, the Parks and Ground Manager recommends approving the proposal for Tommy Lawrence Electrical Contractors at $21,795, Mr. Gooch with the motion to approve, second by Dr. Kozart. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you for what you do, appreciate it, your fields are beautiful. Mr. Eavis, please.
And this is the purpose for cots for the shelter trailer?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman May, fellow commissioners, so we identified that on our shelter trailer, the county-owned shelter trailer, we have most of the cots that are on there approximately 20 years old, they're way past the end of life for the material that they're made of. So, for the safety of the clients that would come to shelters, we feel that these cots need to be replaced. So through the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, LATCF, we were awarded $12,500 grant for the replacement of these cots. So we reached out, we got three competitive quotes, as you can see in the supplemental pack I give y'all, we got one from ProPAC, one from Grainger, and one from Sportsman's Guide, and to get the greatest amount of cots to replace what we have with the proper weight capacity that we need on those, ProPAC would allow us to get, you know, the biggest bang for our book, so, and you can see, it's the third from the last page on there, it would allow us to get basically 156 cots that would be allowable by that grant.
Anything else, Mr. Eavis?
Not on this one, yes, sir.
And, board, do you have any questions? I think maybe just for the public interest, the cots are for what?
So the cots are for, you know, in case we have to open up a shelter, a mass camp shelter after any kind of event, recently, we held a shelter exercise here at this facility, because this is one of our newer shelters that we've identified, but with the cuts that Red Cross have had across the state, and really across the United States, the amount of cots that they're able to provide of us are very minimal. Right now, currently, they can only provide 50 cots. So years ago, my predecessor went out and built this trailer with cots that were existing around, some of them he got through North Carolina Emergency Management, but we dated them back to Hurricane Floyd, so they really are way past the point of being replaced. And through this grant, and this will not fulfill what we need, but we have another grant that we're waiting to buy, purchase the AEDs for the county. we have another grant that we're waiting to buy, purchase the AEDs for the county. We're just waiting on that to come in so we can really exactly know how much funds we have left in net to purchase the rest of the cots to fill out the trailer.
Okay. Any other, any questions by any board members? What's the pleasure of the board? Move for approval. Mr. Cairn, first, and second by Mr. Willoughby. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Oh, next, please do cover this.
So back when the Fire Commission put forth a budget for this current fiscal year, they voted to provide staffing to the 12 volunteer fire departments in the county. All fire departments would get one part-time firefighter, 10 hours a day, Monday through Friday. Because of the historical funding method with Virgilina Fire Department, they only received 60% of this funding. So instead of them getting a paid firefighter five days a week, they would only get three days a week. So this was revisited at the August 8th Fire Commission meeting and unanimously with the members that attended, it was voted to provide the citizens in northwestern portion of the Gramble County, Virgilina Community, the same coverage as 11 other volunteer fire departments. Again, this was a unanimous vote. This would allow Virgilina Fire Department to be able to staff one part-time person Monday through Friday, 10 hours a day. The cost difference of adding this would be approximately $20,160. In the current budget ordinance, it was, funding was made available to pay workers' compensation for the volunteer fire departments. However, the state of North Carolina this year is currently going to pay that funds for the fire department. That being said, it frees up the $24,000 and that funds left over would be more than enough to cover to allow Virgilina to have someone there five days a week. And just a key note off of that, today we actually had a fire in Gramble Rural Fire Department and they had already started their, I think today was their actual first day, they put a paid fireman in the station. Fire was contained to probably $5,000 to $10,000 worth of damage in a mobile home that's, will be easily repairable where if they weren't there, it'd probably been total loss to very extensive damage. So it's already paid off having a paid person in the station today.
Any questions from any of the commissioners?
I have a question. You mentioned that they were, the state of North Carolina would pay the 20, the working comp for this year.
Yes.
Is that going to be ongoing?
So that was part of what I believe is the offer funds. So that was for last year and this year. So going forward, you know, it would have to be funded, which we had approximately around $90,000 extra that was not accounted for in this fund. So it still is enough money to pay for it, but this was just the already allotted funds.
So this year we find with it?
Yes.
Next year we find with it?
Which, yes, we should be. Yes, sir.
But then we'll have to revisit it going forward?
Yes, sir.
If we stay at the 60%?
Yes, but hopefully with the reevaluation...
I understand.
It should not be an issue.
Any other questions from any commissioners?
Yes. Is this reimbursement, they pay the firemen and then they submit to the Fire Commission and commission, cut them a check?
Yes, so they're doing it on a monthly basis. So they pay the firemen and they issue me a reimbursement form with proof of where their wages and their FICA, and then the county will reimburse them.
I don't want to belabor this. I want to take a vote on this and then I just want to leave it open, if you don't mind, board, for the ask, just a few questions about some of the progress that's been made regarding the Fire Commission and placing people on the vehicles. Is that, is that okay with the board? Okay, at this time, what's the pleasure of the board regarding the cots? Excuse me, Virgilina?
Virgilina?
Virgilina. Move to set.
Set.
Mr. Jay, first, second by Mr. Willoughby. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven oh. So if I could, can you tell us what the status is of the fire contracts for our departments and budgets, I should go back, for our contract at volunteer fire departments?
So with the fire contracts right now, 11 of the volunteer fire departments have the contract in hand. 10 of the 11 have already signed it and it's complete, signed by the department itself as well as the county. One of those have yet to sign it. We went to a meeting with them to discuss any issues they had with it last week and hopefully we'll have some resolve with that shortly. The other department is tied up, is tidying with the municipality, so it's, I'm assuming that contract should be ready very shortly to get all the volunteer fire departments. Now, the two municipal departments that we provide funding for, a letter was sent with them to let them know what steps they had to do to receive that funding this year. Because they're, they're a different contract. They'll provide mutual aid versus primary coverage.
So by sending that letter, does that mean they're, they're on go?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, so Oxford and Butler are on go for funding?
Yes. And once they submit their information, in Oxford, I expect them to do it any time now. Butler usually waits to the spring of the year to submit theirs.
Okay. And do you know how many departments are currently manning, manning the trucks during the day?
So right now, I only, I think I officially know it's two. I think most of them were waiting till the beginning of this month to start it, but I know a lot of them have put the applications out to try to provide employees.
So we, so we've made a lot of progress in the last 30 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Mr. Ren, do you know what the current status is of Creedmore?
I reviewed a graph that was sent back and how it would be more attorney, other than one question I was ready to approve and very promising. It was a good look at the day as well, so it should be moving forward.
Okay, good. Okay, very good. Any other questions from Mr. Eavis? There's nothing to vote on. I just wanted to give the board an update on the decisions that the Fire Commission have made and so manned personnel and it comes to somewhere around $50,400, I think, a year per...
That's correct.
Per volunteer department to apply to that out of the fire tax. Any other question? Thank you, Mr. Eavis.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work and thank you for the cots and generators and everything else you get for the county on grants. It's much appreciated. Move on to Parks, Greenways and Recreation Committee to make appointments to the Parks, Greenways and Recreation Advisory. And so we're going to go to the terms of Wayne Hudson, District Two, Betty Lou Davis, District Four, Marilyn Howard at large, and Chamber Director at large expired in August. Ms. Ratliff is the new Chamber, County Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, is willing to serve at a large seat. And then Ms. Hudson, Ms. Davis and Ms. Howard do not wish to be appointed. So I think what we'll do is take care of Ms. Ratliff first. Is there a motion that she be approved to take on a, a large seat? Motion to approve. Second, Mr. Gooch. Second. Mr. Willoughby. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
The next would be District Two. Any...
I don't have anyone at this time.
Okay. And District Four?
Mr. Chairman, with a lot of thanks to one of my former teachers, Ms. Betty Davis, who has asked to be replaced on this committee, I'd like to recommend for appointment Marvin Davis.
Commissioner Kozart is recommending Marvin Davis. That's, do I have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Willoughby.
Is that her son, Dr. Kozart?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Any discussion? All in favor? Let's see. Additional at large here. Is there any motions or any recommendations for additional laws? We can go back to it if not. Okay, we'll move on. Now to the Oxford Board of Adjustment, ETJ, an appointment, Luanne Elliott Gilligan, District One, previously District Three, has resigned and needs to be replaced. So does District One have a, excuse me, or three?
District Three, yes. I would like to make a motion to put Sandy Woody on.
Any other further discussion on that? Have a first and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other points on that? Okay. Next is Mr. Hobgood. Thank you for hanging around, Terry.
Save the best for last, yeah.
There you go.
So this item is to approve an interlocal agreement with the City of Creedmore that will fund the partnership for a grants officer position between the two entities. So this position was included in the FY 2324 budget and this draft agreement would provide the legal framework for this collaborative position with Gramble County and the City of Creedmore. Gramble County Administration met with the Creedmore City Manager recently to iron out the details and County Attorney and the City Attorney have both provided edits to this draft agreement. And the recommendation is to allow both attorneys to finish finalizing the agreement and pending approval by the Creedmore Board of Commissioners authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on our behalf.
Now happy, take any questions.
Do we have, have the two attorneys gotten, have we gotten that together?
It's not fully reflected in what you have on the agenda. There's been a couple of small adjustments.
Y'all, y'all are cleaning it. We all have to clean and then two months come back and bite us again.
I don't think there's anything like that. I didn't work a mayor, I was just working on a agreement.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I think the more, then two or three months come back and bite us again.
I think the players that did that to us are gone.
I wasn't up.
I think it's a good agreement because it's, you spoke parties when they need, you know, the changes I made were clearly reflected. We were in a clean empty and that sort of thing, but I'm going to come with the form of the agreement and make the agreement.
Any other, I apologize. Any other commissioners? Yes, County Manager.
Just to note that the City Manager in Creedmore is also taking this agreement to his board this week. We have a job description all ready to go and posted. We're eager to move forward with this as soon as we get the ink dry on the document.
So again, for the public's interest, the significance of this position?
So this is a, this is a position that we've, in my view, needed for some time. We do have Terry as kind of a grants manager kind of position, but as you all know and are aware, he does a lot of internal analysis. He's our Public Information Officer. That's becoming more and more of a, a full-time job. And so we wanted more dedicated, grant-related horsepower. Understood that the City of Creedmore also was interested in that. And so we've decided to combine efforts for the time being and see if we can hire a really good person with a lot of deep experience and connections in the grant writing world and see if we can make a little more headway and free up Terry for, for some different kinds of tasks that are also needed at the county.
Thank you, County Manager. It's a, it's a collaborative effort and it's, and I think it's critical that we, because of staffing, they don't have all the time they need often to look at all the grants that come in. And, and it's important that, you know, there's a lot of financial opportunity out there through grants that are often missed because we don't have the resources. This provides a partnership with one of our, with one of the county's cities in order to maximize those efforts in a way that can bring in hopefully some dollars to help both the county and both the town or the city of Creedmore. So was this just, and I'm sure that everything in here was discussed with their attorney, city manager, and they were on board with what, what's being presented to us tonight and they're not going to be called off guard by anything during their meeting. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board? Yes.
I'll make the motion that we, I'll make the motion that we move forward with the contract as written by the two attorneys.
Yep. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Move forward with the contract and sign this contract. Let's see, let me just look on this here real quick. Very good. It's the county attorney, county manager and so forth. So that's good. All right. Motion carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Motion carries.
Yes, sir. So I wasn't sure if you wanted to introduce this item or if I should, but I'm happy to note that in the coming months, we've, we've now finalized dates and locations for seven listening sessions around the county at different community facilities and in different parts of the county. I believe there's, there's one in each of your districts. Maybe not quite, but we're close, as close as we can get with, with rentable, usable facilities. And the purpose of this, now that I have approximately a year under my belt, is, is both for me to go out and, and meet people in each of the, the different parts of the county, also to hear back along with, you know, a number of members of senior staff who will be attending as well, to, to hear from the, the community about issues they, they're facing and, and needs that they would like to, to put in front of us. You know, in some cases, in my experience, you know, that's a, it's an opportunity for the county to do more. In some cases, it's also an opportunity for the county to explain what the limitations of, of county government can be or are. And so, but in any case, I'm looking forward to, to these sessions. I'm glad we've gotten them scheduled and look forward to seeing people out in the community.
Thank you, County Manager. At the request of the board, the county manager got on this and we appreciate it. I think it's very important to give our opportunity to meet with all our constituents and the county manager. This board hires the county manager and we have to embrace areas of his philosophy. He is the, lack of better terms, the CEO of the county. And so although we have a board of commissioners that drives policy and things of that nature, makes voting decisions regards to our finances and so forth, he is at the helm and we depend greatly upon him. So it's very important that he represents the hundreds of employees he has and the services that are provided by the tax dollars that he has an opportunity to meet those people that he's serving. And I think this is a great opportunity. Any other questions? County Manager, just give me one second here. Got to find my itinerary. Commissioner County Manager, it's your report.
I do have one other quick item that I wanted to mention. We got a very welcome letter today from the North Carolina Department of Information Technology informing us of something that we, we sort of let you know was coming in our meetings the last couple of weeks, our small group meetings. And that was an announcement that the Division of Broadband and Digital Equity were announcing that our great grant application, and actually this was a letter that they sent to Spectrum, not, not directed to us, but they sent us a copy of the letter, saying that, that basically our, our number two application for great grant funds had been funded by the state and that in addition to the 1,900 odd locations that were funded in the first round great grant that we received, an additional 1,500 and some locations would be served through this, excuse me, through this additional grant. this, excuse me, through this additional grant. And so, that is very encouraging for a variety of reasons. I think access to, to high-speed broadband has probably been the issue that I've heard the most about since I've arrived here, and I know that's the same for each of you, and these considerable federal funds for broadband expansion that have been coming our way really represent, I think, a, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Granville County and more rural counties in general to make some great strides in connecting our, you know, decentralized rural population to the Internet. And I think it will change the way that this county operates and can operate, and I'm excited to see what that will bring. Even on top of these two grants, we still have the Completing Access to Broadband process coming, as well as an additional federal program whose acronym I can't quite call to the front of my head right now, but, you know, there, there is still money flowing on top of what we've already gotten here, and so I remain encouraged that by, when all is said and done, that we will have made some really considerable strides connecting or offering that connection to every household or something close to it in this county.
Thank you, County Manager. And, and so underserved means there's no Internet, and they don't, we have some areas that got really slow service, but they're not considered underserved. Am I correct? Is white?
Underserved would be the lower standard.
Okay. Are these going to unserved areas? Okay, that's my point.
That's a great, that's a great point, that the federal funds are really targeted at making sure that everybody has some level of Internet connection. I think these new ones will be fast. They'll be faster than some of the existing connections that people have. I think that that's a, that's a, an effort to achieve and deliver equity on behalf of the federal government, and also is an observation, I think, that where the private market has already seen fit to distribute Internet service, faster and faster speeds are more likely to come, just, just in the matter of course, through the free market at those locations, and that these other harder to, to serve locations, more rural locations, are the ones that should be the focus of this significant amount of federal funding.
Thank you, County Manager. Any further? Thank you. County Attorney?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to do with the presentation of Commissioners. Mr. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted, every year, our Crime Stopper Banquet is coming up in October 24, and we always have a table, and so asking the board would they purchase a table this, this year for Crime Stopper?
Have we, have we, have we done so yet?
Not yet.
No, you, you're recommending we get one or two?
I don't know how many we get.
Ms. Court, come in.
We've had one in the past, but we've had Commissioners get a title.
How much, how many does a seat, seat?
It's one-twenty a table.
Okay, and how many is this? Eight? Okay. Are you making the recommendation that the board purchase a table?
Yeah.
Okay. Please, the board?
A second motion, Mr.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. There you go, Mr. Jay.
All right, thank you. Also, just like to, on September 28th, 20, 28th, at the Carley Banquet is coming up. We actually, if you haven't got your ticket, please do.
It's in Granville County this year.
Oh, yeah. Is that, I was, it's going to be at the Carley Farms, on, Kentucky Road, man. The downtown road, this year. So, please, go have some good food, and, and have entered your app, get in for, for candidate in for, eh, elected commissioner, eh, county clerk, eh, this year, if you haven't turned in, please do. And also, just like to say, we, I've been, I got a question, I don't know what they, what, how they going to add, have answered, but, eh, we're talking about, are we, eh, talking about the money we getting, we getting for this fund, for the opioid fund, are we doing anything to, are we trying to set up any kind of programs or something else that kept that person that have to go, they get, they go in and get fixed back up, get them eh, back on the right track? Are we doing any programs to keep them on that right track? Are we just turning them loose and they coming back and falling back in the same situation?
Well, I'll let any of our committee members on the opioid committee speak to that.
We haven't gotten to the point of specific programs. Right now, we're working with the Health Department, and we've, we haven't started appropriating funds yet.
We did, you did, we did approve Commissioner Gooch for a, a, someone to start?
Yes, we did, we made a, we, we approved a position for a coordinator to help guide us along, but we haven't appropriated any money for any specific programs.
What we do though, though, is we do have programs through the Health Department, and we actually have VIA visions there in, in Oxford that, as you recall, I think you were at the opening, where they deal with walk-ins and so forth, and I do also believe that our Sheriff's Office works with inmates through a number of programs, and VIA is also a very active partner, which we'll hear more about that, Mr. Jay, when Mr. Elliot Clark with VIA comes before our board next month.
I, I was, and I saw him, and I talked with him at, at the conference, and, and I was asking them the same question, is we got anybody torn them to... See, I, I know a case that, I've heard a case, that the person, every two weeks, they break back doing the same thing. What if we, if, if we do, we got a program to help those people to, when they get out and get, and pull them back, to keep them on the right track, and they won't be coming back?
That's not an easy one.
I, I know it's a hard task.
It, it is, and we have nonprofits that have been taking part in the opioid advisory committee meetings that offer such, offer such programs. We've gotten some providers such as VIA that offers that. I think the Health Department has some programs, but to identify a specific program from the committee, we don't have that at this time.
In fairness, Mr. Gooch, that's not the right word, in fairness, but if I understand you correctly, you're working to a cohesive strategy to where you want to make sure that we're applying the funds that we do get in a way that can be used most effectively and efficiently, because it's not, it, it seems like a lot of money, but it, it actually is, is, is not as much as one, one appear to be.
No, it, it's not as much money, and with hiring this coordinator, that's taken up a good portion of our money. We're hoping down the road, this coordinator position can be split with Vance County, because our health system is, is Granville and Vance, and we're hoping the coordinator position can be split between the two counties and give us more effective money to spend. But to, to identify a specific program, it, it's not, we don't, we're not at that point with opioid advisory committee that we have a specific program to address the specific issue you're speaking of, but there are nonprofits that have those programs, and there are other organizations that have those programs available.
Mr. Wiliford?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a quick comment. Last meeting, I was absent, and I'd just like to go on record and let the public know that as a newly-elected commissioner, I take this very serious, and I had, my wife and I celebrated forty-two years of blissful marriage in July, and we had planned a cruise a year ago, and I had let Ms. Weary know that if I won, that I would miss the meeting in August, so, and I know that was a big meeting for the people in STEM, and I do apologize for not being here, but that was my reason for not being here. Other than that, we do have the hot sauce this weekend, Saturday in Oxford.
It's too late, I missed you, Chad. I was on, I was on a, a bus ride to Tennessee, to Cincinnati, to the Ark, to see the, the Red Car North Ark.
I wasn't there. Nobody invited me.
That was the experience of my life.
Good, very good. Thank you both Commissioners.
First time I can remember in twenty-nine years that I have missed.
Good. Ms. Emmett?
Thank you. There were quite a few of us that went to the NCACC Annual Conference, and there were very, very many classes there. I did meet two employees of the NCACC that they hire, that they hope that the counties will hire, and that for the opioid situation, and there were two young ladies, and I wrote their names down, and I cannot find that piece of paper, but I'm sure they can help us figure that out. But there were two young ladies that sounded like to me they would be an excellent hire for that position, and so we'll have to check into that and see what I can find out for you all. But I did enjoy it. There were a lot of neat classes, a lot of classes that I sat through and went, I don't know why I'm here, so, but I took them anyway, so, but I enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kozart?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say, just a couple of comments about our facilities here in Granville County. The, the sheriff from Halifax County came to visit. They're looking at building a jail and came here, and I just want to share with the board that Commissioner Bryant there was extremely impressed with our facility and made note of how it looks from the, from the road, and just felt like it, you know, it just didn't look like a jail, and also the, the information they were able to get about the facility as they go to plan. And then this past weekend, my family reunion was in this, in this facility, and I had some cousins from out of state who were just absolutely amazed and very appreciative that we have. The older ones really appreciated the parking. It's kind of amazing. They really appreciate the fact that they could pull close to the door and get in without a long walk, so we're so happy and pleased with this. And I just wanted to say a word about Ms. Deborah. I went to a meeting about a week ago one night, and I got home about nine-thirty, ten. I sent her an email on a complaint or concern from a couple of people, and that morning, by eight-forty, Mr. Speeds had already called the citizen and taken care of the issue, and I'm just grateful for that because it really makes our lives much easier when we get that kind of response. Thank you, Ms. Deborah, for initiating that conversation. And I won't go into any detail about this, but I will just say, you're super folk, it's, it's a special, special feeling to have friends who are there when you're in the trenches, and I just, I won't go into the detail, but thanks to you all. I'm very, very proud to be a part of this board. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner Cairn?
So, a couple of quick things. I know, Drew, in your presentation about the Great Grant, when you were looking for the CAB, the Completing Access to Broadband, one of the other fun grant programs, I think the, the most fun part about that Great Grant award was that we reduced the amount of money we were going to be contributing by nine-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. So, we were, originally had dedicated a million bucks to that program, and we're getting off for ten grand, and that is huge. That speaks to the fact that it was a good project, and you had two Great Grants that were awarded for Granville County. I think that's, that's big, and I know that those are not going to be the only fiber or lines they're going to put in the ground. They're going to be pretty near a whole lot more folks that will be able to hook onto those, that infrastructure that's going in, so appreciate the work of the, the folks here at our digital infrastructure, not a normal role for counties to be in, but we've been thrust into that, and I think we've risen to the occasion. The Cooperative Extension is having its annual volunteer, volunteer member appreciation event coming up September twenty-seventh, again, here in Granville County at the Carley Farms. So, if you're a member of the Cooperative Extension or a volunteer, you probably already know about that, but good stuff. And Jason touched on it earlier, the shelter event that was put on here with a grant through InFocus, so, towards the, I can see their logo twenty-four-seven, but shelter event that was put on, on eight-eight, really displayed some of the awesome things we've got between animal control with their cohabitation for pets when they come to a shelter is a big reason why a lot of people don't leave their residence during a storm because they don't want to leave their loved one behind. The shelter facilities that we've got with that animal control, and then the shower facilities that we've got through emergency management, wrapped it up with the, the new cots that we proved tonight, I think is a good thing, so, good stuff. On target, okay. But it was a good grant process that we went through to do a readiness event with their, the partners. Sheriff's Department was here, as well as all our other community partners, so, good event. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gooch?
Thank you. We all, several have touched on the North Carolina Association, a county commissioner's annual meeting in Raleigh, and we had a lot of classes, a lot of good informations exchanged between the participants and the, I guess, instructors or the professionals that were there, and as well as a lot of the vendors that are there. And I got into a lengthy conversation with Builder Services, and they are mostly known for disaster. You got a flood, hurricane, you know, anything, a fire, they came, they come in, they clean up, and they restore your building. But one of the things that our conversation turned to was air quality in HVAC systems and the collection of mold and dust in, in the vents, and, you know, we've got caught with a problem several years ago in the schools where we had, two schools, I believe it was, we had mold issues. I think we should look into, I'm not recommending the company, mind you, I'm just recommending that we look into having someone inspect the air ducts in county buildings on a rotating annual basis, not, you can't do every one of them, you know, you, we'd break our budget if we did all the buildings at one time, but we need to set up a maintenance, I feel like we need to set up a maintenance program where we look at buildings on a rotating basis based on age and how long they've been in service, and this could save us a lot of money down the road, because this guy was talking about, they had found a foot, foot and a half of dust in buildings that were less than twenty years old. So, it, it can, you know, we could be breathing contaminated air now and not know it. So, I, I feel like this is something we need to look into, especially in the school buildings, because children are more, you know, they're, they're more likely to catch something that lasts, that sticks with them a lifetime than we are.
What you're saying, Mr. Gooch, is, what you're saying, we've already lived our lives.
I got a lot more years in the rearview mirror than I have in windshield.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Just a few, just a couple of things. During the conference in Raleigh, it was interesting to hear, how do we get funds to build new schools? And being a Tier Two county, it's difficult unless you're consolidated. And being a tier-two county, it's difficult unless you're consolidating more than one school. And so, that was one of the key takeaways I had was, you know, they have a formula, it's set, and, and the criteria is very difficult, particularly if you're a tier, a tier-two or tier-three, if you're, if you're one of the really, really poor counties, it really is kind of skewed to, to their, to their advantage and, but they do try to meet all the needs. On October 7th in Butner, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., there'll be a Veterans Health Resource Fair. Just going to put that out there, and I'm sure that's going to be carried by most of our newspapers and so forth, but that, the veteran services is involved in that. And a music festival in a couple of weeks in Creedmoor, and we're looking forward to that. So, a lot happening in Granville County. And finally, just want to thank the staff for being here tonight. I know it's a long day for you. Thank you for taking the time to be here, putting together packets and all the hard work you do to make these meetings go through as smoothly as possible. And, and to our clerk who, who really, who really grinds it to make sure that all our books are ready and everything prepared so that we get here, it runs smoothly. With that, is there any other matter to discuss? With that being said, do we have any, anything for closed session? Nope? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Even everybody else.
No dissenting, no dissenting vote.
Mr. Paul, don't.